All right. We'll now call the city council final budget meeting and regular meeting to order for September 28th at 6:00 PM. Please rise the invitation and the budget meeting.
Father, we thank you for this time. Lord, we just ask that you would be here with us tonight, Father. We ask that you would help us make any decisions, Lord. Give us the wisdom of Solomon tonight, Father. Ask that you would bless this meeting, bless each and every person here, Father. Ask that you would bless each and every person continuing to fight against this coronavirus, every other worldly issue that we have currently on, currently, Father. Once again, we just thank you with praise in the name of Father Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you please, call roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Here.
Councilmember Bray?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
All right. First up, we have a transfer of property from Naval Park Housing Authority.
Oh.
Mark. I see your name by it. I don't know if that means you're going to be...
No, my name's not, but Nikki Day is supposed to be with us.
She is.
Okay. Nikki?
Hello.
That's going.
Hi. Thank you for having me virtually this evening. I'd be happy to go ahead and give you a brief background for this, for the city manager. This, before you, this evening, city council members, is approval of the property transfer agreement between the city of Avon Park and the housing authority, which owns a piece of property in which the city has some plans. And I'll let the city manager speak to the city's plans for the property, but it's been in the works for some time to go ahead and get this property transferred to the city of Avon Park. The transfer agreement is a cost-only agreement, meaning no one is actually paying any, anything more than $10 for the property itself, with costs borne equally by both parties. The closing should, if approved this evening, the closing should occur, we hope, within about 30 days, although the housing authority does have some restrictions that encumber all of its property that it has to have released in order to transfer the property to the city. Those initiatives are already underway so that the housing authority can be prepared to close. The housing authority approved the agreement in the same form on September 15th of 2020, just last week. So unless, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the agreement and otherwise would recommend approvals that we can move forward with the transfer.
Okay. We have any questions for Nikki?
What's the final address for that property?
Is there an address or is it just a scrap number?
I don't believe that there is a distinct address that is assigned to that property specifically. We described it in the purchase and sale agreement by the legal description.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, enter in a motion.
I move that we approve the agreement of the property transfer of the Avon Park Housing Authority to the city of Avon Park as described in our agenda actually.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and seconds. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Nikki, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
You too.
You too.
I got a question, but Jerry, is this a general thing? Is this like a template that we can use when other transfers come about? Or we have to go through that same process all the time?
Yep, because it's the same process all the time.
Thank you.
Anything else on that subject?
I'd just like to say I'm so glad this is over with. That I mean, we've been going through this for quite some time now. So thank you, Nikki, for going through. Thank you, Jerry, Mark, and all the staff for finally making this happen.
Good. Thank you, Nikki. Your pleasure to work with it. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We're going to look, we're going to work toward a smooth and successful closing for you. Jerry is welcome to consider using our template for future agreements, but he's right. We would need, you would need to still approve it and go through. And I know that parts of this process were complicated by matters outside of the city's control. So definitely appreciate everyone's patience and professionalism, and we'll look toward a successful, smooth, and quick closing.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
So at this point in time, the reason why we needed that property was so that we could construct some playground equipment?
Yes.
And some of the things, is there anything holding that project up at this time?
I don't think we probably need to put it down until we actually have the property.
Of course, yeah.
Right. Yeah, because Robert asked me every two or three weeks if we've got it yet.
This was the last thing we were waiting on, that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So hopefully after the next 30 days when everything goes through.
Right. Okay. All right. Moving on to item number four, review and discussion of new job descriptions. We've already kind of touched on the airport customer representative. I'm sure it's going to get tweaked over time. So we'll start out with number one, sanitation supervisor. Is there any changes or concerns on that?
I don't know that we have the authority to do this. We only have authority for our charter to review director positions.
We're more than welcome to give them our opinions.
Yeah.
And yeah, I mean, that's what...
I don't want to infringe on the city managers.
No, that's, I mean, we're looking for, if you see stuff, you know, to be added or not, like I said, we're transparent, working as a team, and these are positions we're asking for. If we get them, this is the job title, but certainly open to your opinions, your thoughts on it.
The charter does allow for contrary to some, it's certain paths. It does allow for suggestions and things like that. You just can't give mandates.
Okay.
Does anyone have any opinions on the sanitation supervisor position as described in our council pack?
I think it's a good thing.
Do we have any employees that currently would fit to be able to move up in this? Were there any opportunities in-house?
Actually, I asked, and there's at least one that would need to, you know, it wasn't written for them. I didn't know until the draft, because I wouldn't write one. But I believe there is one that could apply for at least one.
Okay.
Do we still do the advertising in-house before we go outside? Do we still do that?
Well, it allows us to do it at the same time. I, from practice in the sheriff's office, I like to put it out both ways, or else you're wasting a lot of time sometimes.
So this is not a union job?
It is, but it allows us to put it out at the same time for in-house first for 10 days.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, in-house first.
I think Maria was asking if this was a union job, but it's listed as a supervisor, so it is not a union position.
So you don't have to advertise it like a union job?
Well, okay. I thought that all of those, as a courtesy, I thought it was done that way. That was just my assumption, so.
Is there anything else for number one? Anything for the IT administrator? Seeing none, stormwater maintenance?
Because we're such experts on stormwater.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
We're not either, so.
I guess that, that famous byline, other duties as assigned, just needs to be added to all of these. That's all, just in case.
Part-time building official?
This one, you'll see a big graph on the top, because this is a, this is a big undertaking. We were, when we first started, we started as a building official, then found out official, unless they have certification in every area, which almost no one does, which found out. If, I think if, David, correct me if I'm wrong, if the city under 50,000?
Yes.
If, so you can use a building official and they don't have to have all these. Actually, Kim hooked us up with a building official up in...
Lake Wales.
Lake Worth. And...
Lake Wales.
Lake Wales, I'm sorry, Lake Worth, I think back, found this account. But he's kind of great with us, and we called him three or four times. And this time, he says, you know, as most people, you're going to have to be hard pressed to find somebody, but he's the one that's helped us out a lot on this. And we've sent him and had him look at it, actually, up there. They, he has a director over him. He's a building official, and then he has some building inspectors under him. He's had a hard time hiring, but they got now building inspectors for the prices of fans, so. As always, there's a big draft on the top, because we think we've got it, but we want to make sure when we put it out, that, you know, we're actually putting out with whoever comes in could actually do the jobs.
So I have a question in regards to the actual position. One, would a retired contractor likely fit the bill? And would we be helping with any kind of the coursework in, similar to what we do for code enforcement officers, of sending them to code enforcement school?
Not, if just a contractor, they have to have allowances. And actually, Kim tripped on, looking at an org, another ordinance for me, that there's actually a 1999 city ordinance here that spells out a building official and probably get a Jerry on it, but some of the language has been updated from statutes that would have, it's, and we just tripped on last week. So we need to get a Jerry on it, because you already have an ordinance on building official. But just a regular contractor can't do it. I mean, they have to have that building official, certified building code. That's a, one of the change where you see, we've got building official, but now it's really called Florida Certified Building Code Administrator, but they're still using the word building official, because a lot of cities still do.
So the second question is, I know that one of our previous meetings, when we had these county building officials here, it was stated that if we were to do this, that we would never be able to revert back to the county.
And I spoke to Randy down at the county on that, and he said that he doesn't speak for him for the board, but it could happen that way. And I tried calling Randy again this week, just talked to him, is this going to come out? And they told me he was on vacation for the week, so.
So because this is, if we pass this with the budgeted amount, then this kicks in October 1st. This will affect the budget of the county, because they will no longer be getting fees from the city of Avon Park. From what I understand, it totaled around $60,000 for this last year, fiscal year. So I don't know what their general revenue is in terms of fees and things, but they would have to adjust their budget if we are going to remove, we're not going to use them anymore, because they'll no longer be getting city of Avon Park fees.
Well, we're going to continue to use them. If you approve this and we go out on this, we don't even know if we're going to get anybody.
No, I know. I just didn't know if there's going to be a, come October 1st from the county, and we're on our own.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I tried calling Randy on Friday or Wednesday last week, and they told me he was off for a few days. So I'll try him in the morning, but I don't, honestly, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, I would think that you're going to need, there's going to be a transition period of this.
Right.
Right. You're right.
Yeah, transition, that's what I'm looking for. I just didn't want to go cold turkey and not have any...
Oh, well, you're absolutely not. Because like I said, we're being told, we're going to be lucky if you find somebody.
Yeah, and we, you know, in the future, if that person leaves one day, and then we're left with, you know, a six-month period, we're going to have to have some type of fallback plan. So I would expect the county would oblige that.
I move too.
Me too.
All right. Is there any ideas or changes on that draft proposal?
It covers LDR in its oh-so subtle way, so I think it's adequate, very adequate.
Okay. I would just simply add on the physical demands, that obviously this person would have to be climbing a ladder and traversing steep slopes from time to time. If they're going to be checking out roofing, they would have to actually physically get up there.
And we're still talking about that. And then we'll think that if you want to transition it into the zoning and the land development code enforcement aspect of it first, you know, since that's the weakness we have right now with the county.
Mm-hmm.
And then move into that stuff later.
That's what I meant about LDR. Should we specify LDR in here? Because it says codes, codes, but it doesn't specify land development.
Yep. Land development code and zoning requirements. Right now, you're using, you have some four regional planning council, but you really need to have somebody on the ground here with regard to compliance.
It says you're zoning, but LDR, I think if you spelled it out, you are correct. I think the LDR specifically has to be in there, because that is the reason why we're doing this.
Or LDC, I don't know which one you have.
LDR.
In many different ways, land development code or land development regulations. I've heard it seen in different ways, but should be, should be in there.
Anything else on the job descriptions? Seeing none, moving on. So we have the resolution 2020-16, which is the millage rate and the final budget. Would we not need to adjust the final budget first before we accept the millage rate?
You can't.
We cannot?
You have to adopt the millage rate before you adopt the budget.
But we can review the budget, and then we can go back and adopt the millage rate.
Yeah, you just have to do the adoptions in that order.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, we do not have to actually make a vote on the final millage rate at this time until we've discussed the budget.
Why?
Okay.
Sorry, because you can't record it for the board?
No, correct. Yeah. Okay. So having said that, we'll now have the final budget hearing. This is item number six.
Would I, is it required to have a hearing order to discuss the aspect of it regarding the airport? Or, because that's really the missing link right here, right?
No, we're not...
Are you going to have the hearing? Is that putting, is that then putting the budget in front of the millage at that point? If we have this, if we have the hearing on the budget first, are we, are we then committed to buy it?
You can't vote on it first. You have to vote on the millage before you vote on the budget, but you can discuss and vote.
Right. And just if we say, if we open it for a public hearing, are we not then, you know...
Oh, public hearing.
Yeah. Let's just, you know, talk about it casually.
Just talk about it and then do the public hearing adoptions in order.
Thank you. Very good. That's what I was, that's what I was saying.
All right. So we'll now have the discussion of the final budget. I'm sure we'll start with the changes from Dan. Any notes that he has first?
And Dan, but before you move on, so this budget that we have in front of us was prepared with the millage rate being 2.0.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so the first page, before the budget assumptions, does talk about just some, what I, I believe are minor changes to the document, although it does create changes throughout the document. First of all, as the health insurance costs became more known, I went back through them and basically recalibrated all the notes, the note ones on all the different departments with the new fringe benefit costs. Now, I'm going to share a screen here, because I just, I believe it's a little easier for me to explain. And I got it here on my budget here now. This, we ran the ad Saturday for the budget hearing in the millage increase. And this is, again, at the two mills. And so what that does, there are two lines that are very critical. One thing I didn't realize when I was preparing the ad until about maybe a week to 10 days ago, is that our total expenses here, given any fund, let me just freeze that here real quick. Okay. So this line has to equal our total expenditure line. And so what, basically what you're doing is, if you have a, if you're spending more than you take in, you plug a number here in this line for use of reserves. So for example, $71,000 in infrastructure that is, you know, it's being over-budgeted. Or that's not, or the water sewer is a better, better example. So we're going to tap into $1.3 million of their reserve. If you have a surplus, then you have to basically bump up the expense side of it to balance the budget. So currently, at that two mills, that's, this is the point I want to get to, is that the general fund is operating with about 100 and almost $104,000 surplus at two mills. So we can scale that back again. And again, this is given the budget on the expenditure and revenue side. As it's currently presented, I know that council member Sullivan indicated she had up to $200,000 on the expenditure side that she identified as potential cuts. But nevertheless, $103,000, almost $104,000 is being plugged on the expenditure side, again, just to balance our revenue and the expenditures.
Question.
Yes?
If you scale back the budget, I mean, the tax thing, the millage, thank you. What would, what would it have to be scaled back to to eliminate $103,000 from?
To be, and that was, that was where it's going next.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, that's fine. That's a very proactive approach, Brenda, and I appreciate that. It would be 1.35 mills to get that to zero. And again, that's assuming in, in the budget that we're going to spend every, every penny and receive every penny we get. Now, I do have another slide here. So this is our current, let me see how we're doing this. This is our current fund balance. Again, in general fund, this is, we just received the 19 audit finalized and completed, and it's showing us reducing our millage, just our fund balance, I'm sorry, slightly from the prior year. Now, I ran Friday, which would have been through Friday, through Thursday's business postings, and this would include all the accounts that were paid this last week that the mayor comes in, signs off on. Includes the payroll. And so basically, it's as of September 25th. And so this is with five days left in the budget. Currently, general fund revenue is at $5.2 million, and expenses are about 5, $4.6 million that, and that leaves us currently with five days left in the budget year, about a $650,000 surplus. Again, suggesting that we're not spending everything that we budget, and that might be through vacant positions, lapse money, whatever you want to call it. This number I would be worried about, except I also add, and it's, this is the same number right here, that surplus. I asked our audit prep consultant to make sure that our insurance, our workers' comp, some of these things that typically weren't getting posted till well after year end, to make sure those were in, and I double-checked, and those were in too. So I have personally the belief that we'll have some sort of a surplus this year. And if I were just to estimate a number, because I don't think there are going to be that many adjustments outside of those insurance payments, it might be as much as $400,000. That would generate a surplus still for 19, for 20, for the current year at about $250,000.
And excuse me for interrupting. What do you suggest a surplus should be, say, by the end of the year?
Well, the policy, council has policy, the city has policy, I believe that says 20% is ample. This is going to put us very close to almost 100% of reserves versus our expenditure budget.
So for this year, we're looking good.
At the moment, we are. And, and again, that, that's my, my belief. If you go back to item C5, the first page after that cover, I have a graph there, and that shows your fund balance, the reserves for the last seven years. I'm sorry, I don't have this to share on the screen, against the millage rate. So that, seven years ago was 3.6, and then it got cut to 4.3. And you can see that generally, the fund balance, the reserves, have been increasing even at that 0.3 level for, it looks like five of the last six years. It looks like 16 was a little bit of a shortfall, and 19 was a shortfall. And I'm projecting for 20, about a $250,000 surplus, which is this number here that I showed you, minus about $400,000 for, again, just for possible adjustments to be made to the, to the final budget number for 2020. So again, at 0.3, you know, we're still doing pretty well. And a lot of it is because when you budget, you're budgeting for authorized positions, even though maybe some of those positions don't always, they're not in at the beginning of the year, or they're not in for the amount budgeted, or whatever it might be. 1.35, though, is the number I calculated as the break-even point, given the, the budget information that I'm sharing with you today.
Okay. We have questions for Dan, and you had some specific things you wanted to get into?
I have specific things I want to get into.
Okay. Dan, do you have anything else before we start?
Um...
Anything specific?
No, I don't. The, the four notes that I had there, they basically related to that, you know, to that surplus, the discussion about plugging the number in the revenue side, if you're spending more than you're taking in, and plugging the number on the expense side, if you're taking in more than you're spending. That's what notes two refer to. And then three and four were just some, I'm going to call them technical corrections, that I found a couple flaws in this spreadsheet. But beyond that, again, I believe they're very minor adjustments to what you saw two weeks ago.
Okay. Ms. Sullivan, go ahead.
All right. So... I have questions regarding to the budget line items themselves, and then questions regarding actual dollars. So descriptions of things versus cash being spent.
Okay.
So I'll just go down, and I know that we did a lot of these before, but these may have been missed either by myself. All right. Page 33, the state contributions to the account 2216. Where does that funding go, those state contributions? Is it, is for the public safety police?
We're talking about note two?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So that will go to, wait a minute. Well, that's the contract. That's the county, the HCSO contract.
No, no. The state contributions on page 33, it's account number 5212216 under public...
Oh, you're talking about note one.
Yeah, note one, sorry.
Okay. That is a, as it says, that's offset entirely by state revenue. So that $49,000 appears on page, as the offset. I gotta find that number here real quick. Oops, I'm sorry. That appears on page seven in the general fund revenue. And it's the line right, two lines right below that note one, that says 350,000. And then there's two $49,000 lines. It's the second one of those two. That says police, casually insurance premium police pension. So for, you know, basically, if I wanted to make that $100,000 on the expense side, I'd make the same number on the, on the revenue side. It's just, it's an offset.
Okay.
Whatever that number is, the two, the two equal. Fire department also has a similar number, but that would show up in a different, that shows up on page, well, I don't know if you have a question on that or not.
Yeah, yeah. They're both, they're both the same style. I want to ask for the other one.
Oh, and they're both 49? I thought the fire was northern.
It's a more, but I mean, it's the same concept.
Right. Okay.
Maria, can I interrupt you for one second? On the same page, about the sheriff's contract. When we go back to 2015 and 16, this is under the comment number two, the sheriff's services. I mean, starting off in 2015, 16, the actuals went up about more than 10 or 12%. And it also went up again the following year, 2017, 18. So we're actually, those years were going up more than 3%. And I don't know exactly why that happened, but I would like to actually see, to get somebody to renegotiate the contract to maybe give it a fixed 3% increase every year. I'd rather have it see maybe a cost of living increase, because of, the cost of living is 1% or 2% max. I don't see any reason why we should be giving to the sheriff's department an automatic 3% raise every year, especially where not only are we paying the revenue from the city, but we're also as, we're paying revenue to them from the county, our county tax. So I don't know who that person would be, maybe our city attorney, to maybe look at negotiating that contract to equate it to a cost of living with a year-to-year change. Because if, if we continue at this thing, this thing, we're going to be up to 2 million plus real fast.
Yeah. Jim, I know that 75,000 contingency that used to be aside from the contract got rolled into the contract, and that's why you see that big increase.
Yeah. And I believe that was used because they said they were using it to pay for the school protection plan.
Yeah.
But as part of the contract, they were supposed to supply that. But as part of the contract, they were supposed to supply that anyways. I looked at the contract, and it said they will supply to have, uh, police at, as a school system. So I don't see any reason why they would take the seventy-five thousand. It's because it was mandated by the government.
I think they pay for half and we pay for half.
I mean, in either case, this is just the budget we're not.
Yeah, but I mean, it's something to consider, because it's something that I know that we've been talking about for the last few years. So the sustainability of this, at some point, you know, the taxes will be increased just to pay for the increase of the.
Exactly.
So, I mean.
We have to renew the contract every year.
Right, and I think isn't this year the last year, and have we, don't we have just an automatic rollover right now?
We do, and actually, that was the, the end of this in my manager's update. Because the sheriff's office, I'd ask them to come tonight, then they asked for, be the end of October, but they called, the sheriff's gonna be out of town, since it's gonna be our, our first meeting in November, I think it's the ninth. And, and I can tell you they're looking at stats and all that, so.
Well, I just want to go on record that I support them one hundred percent. And, you know, there's no backing out of this contract from my perspective. So I, I, but I do think that we just need to make sure that we have sufficient money in the future, because we're going to end up spending more and use up that surplus sooner than later.
And, and Jim, where it went up over three percent, I know when I left sheriff's office, the contract, the agreement was sixteen and a half people, because you pay a half for the person sits at the front desk over there. And now they're nineteen and a half, and it was because, like I say, the mandate that you had to have SROs in elementary schools also. But the, the sheriff's gonna lay all, in his staff, gonna lay all that out. In fact, they just got a new bucket right over there, and smart, or smart cops down there, so they have a hard time getting all of it. But, um, Major Hood just called me Friday and asked if he can do it in, in November, it's a sheriff's.
Well, I'm, I'm sure they gives a lot of facts and figures they've done. The sheriff's done that before, especially with the different types of, uh, crime work that he's done. And Avon Park, and, uh, stated that this was pretty much most of the time that the North District was spending. But like I said, my biggest thing is, we're paying, we're paying them twice. We're paying them, uh, our county tax, just like Sebring and Lake Placid is, as well as in paying them individual, as well as giving them, you know, the different things I talked about, the use of the building for nothing, ten dollars a year and so forth. I'd rather have kind of a cost of living raise for some other aspect. But I definitely would like to have somebody else besides the city manager to renegotiate their contract for obvious reasons. And, uh, they can come and tell us whatever they want, and, and I have ultimate respect for the sheriff and his department and all that they do, and I also want to keep them. But I want to be what's fair is fair for us, because I represent the citizens and taxpayers of Avon Park. And, uh, and I pay my taxes to the county for the sheriff's department, as well as for the city. But I think we need to look at, uh, other different options to make sure that things are fair. Because I know that, uh, the sheriff was told this before in a report about all the different instances that they had, which I believe he said were mostly on the south side. But he also never divided them up to which ones were in the county, which ones were in the city. Because there's also a lot of them in Avon Park and Sun Lakes, and it's just the county and not the city. And those are all included in the past. So I have some, uh, items that I look at, look at to renegotiate. But that's not my job. But I do have the ultimate respect. I don't want to see this changed. I know that they do a great job, and I, I see the information in the newspaper and Facebook almost weekly of, of things that they're involved in. And, uh, you know, I, I definitely not one of the kind of persons that believes in defunding the police in any way. I just want to make sure that we're getting, uh, paying them the fair amount increase year to year. Go ahead, Maria.
I, just a final comment. Um, I thought I gave you some sort of a reconciliation of, uh, the increases year over year and, and adjusted those costs for, uh, some, you know, a couple of the one-time items that, that came up. But I was looking for that memo while that discussion was going on.
You talking about projections?
No, it was, uh, related to the increase, um, in, in the HCSO contract. And I thought I sent everyone an email, but I don't, uh, I was looking for it very quickly. I'll just, I guess I'll just look for it again. Have another point time.
All right, so going on on page thirty-five, um, right there with the number, the, the number three is that nine thousand dollars at the, um, September.
Correct.
I forgot, we, we took that out, but it's still in this column.
Well, you took the methodology study out, which would have been, I believe, I don't remember what we budgeted, fifteen thousand. We, we'd still be, um, on the, I'm going to say on the hook for an updated, uh, for basically the update in properties. So basically, what we did this year, which is the, just the property update, going through, looking at the tax rolls, taking, putting on the new rules, taking off the old rules. And, uh, you know, setting the assessment notices, sending those notices to the new property owners to have an opportunity to speak at a public hearing about the fire assessment. And basically, the whole process we did this year, um, would still be required to be done.
And that's nine thousand?
That's what we're just, that's what we're projecting, because, uh, this year's contract was eighty-two hundred. And, um, I just got with Mark, um, I think it was probably late last week, where we developed, uh, basically a request for quote from, uh, three different places, because it's being over a thousand dollar, uh, the thousand dollar limit, but under the twenty-five thousand, we got to get some written quotes. So we, uh, we spelled out all the responsibilities, or at least what we believe all the, um, requirements are based on, based, based on what we got this year in, in their breakdown. So we're asking for quotes, uh, to hopefully, hopefully get that ahead, ahead of the game. So we're not, uh, you know, struggling in late June or, or late May, or whenever it is. Trying to figure out, uh, we can't bid this, uh, or we can't ask for quotes, because there's not enough time. This will give plenty of time.
Is this something that has to be done every year?
Yes, uh, it's supposed to be done every year. The methodology can be done, uh, as, as council asks. It may be done, uh, uh, less frequently. But if you don't, uh, if you don't, um, do this part of the study, I, I believe, I'm not exactly sure, but I think you lose, um, on the potential for all new properties, uh, to be assessed, as well as, uh, you may be inadvertently, um, assessing properties that may or may not, uh, uh, exist anymore. They may have fallen out the tax rules.
Okay, I know it's a couple of years ago, it's somewhere there, so, thank you.
Okay, um, um, page. Just scratch these off as I go. Page thirty-eight. Um, this is still part of the general fund under code enforcement. Okay, looking at the code enforcement documentation and the narrative, you have here a code enforcement officer and adding the building inspector part-time. Question is, on the part-time building, the narrative still has an estimated benefit cost of ninety-nine hundred, despite that position being part-time, so there is no benefit for that one? Was that removed from the column?
I'm just, uh, I'm actually, oh, I can.
Number one.
I have to reshare my screen again.
Yeah, page thirty-eight number, well, there's three, two number ones. It's the first number one.
I gotta get back and, uh, oh, I know, I see, I was minimized.
I think we brought this up before.
I'm resharing the screen now, so, uh, that was the problem. So we're back on the personnel side here, and, uh, we're going, we're talking about the building inspector.
Building inspector, correct.
Building official, or, um, so we're right here, um, I'm going to go all the way to the top, so put this on, on the very top line here. Okay, building inspector is right there. So that, here's our, here's the salary we calculated out, um, and we go across, and, um, there's retirement, no life insurance, uh, no health insurance. So basically, that note, I just missed the update on that note as far as benefits. The benefits would be then basically the seventeen hundred dol, almost eighteen hundred dollars in workers' comp, plus, uh, the retirement. So you're looking at forty-five and eighteen.
You get retirement, that part-time?
Um, if they're, if they qualify for the re, uh, retirement system, they would, if they're being paid as an employee.
All part-time with G N F R S, is what you're saying? I mean, is there employees? I don't, never heard of that.
I think, absolutely. I think they're part of the system, aren't they?
No, I don't think so.
Employees are on?
A part-time.
Okay.
So then that should be adjusted down to, uh, eighteen hundred dollars, ninety-nine hundred.
All right, so that, that could be added back to the general fund, is the difference there?
And I can do that right now.
And while you're at that, while you're at that, we had talked several months ago, we were talking about doing a building inspector of replacing the building inspector using funding from the full-time code enforcement officer. And Mark, you had said that you still had that position advertised, but that you haven't hired anyone yet, because we're waiting for this. So is this going to be in lieu of that full-time?
Actually, yes, I was gonna bring that up. I, I spoke to, um, Randy, and, and it's advertised, hadn't hired anybody. I don't even know if we had anybody put in that's qualified in it. If we want to take that position out, or use it towards the airport or whatever, Randy is good with that. He's got two weeks training now, and he says that he's good for now. I mean, that's a position we could use.
Okay, so that's a yes?
Yeah.
So, that being the case, um, then the, you know, let's just keep that money off to the side right now. I don't know what that amount would be for that full-time code enforcement officer, but according to this, it's what, twelve, twelve eighty-two? Um, I don't know what the benefits entail to that.
So you're looking at probably, um, total with, with salary and benefits between thirty-eight and forty thousand?
Thirty-eight and forty thousand?
Yeah.
I'll do the low number. I'm just writing this down.
Do you have anything more on that page, Maria?
I can give you a quick estimate on the cost, just by plugging in a, a couple of numbers in here, but, um, on that, uh, building inspector, I, I forgot to include the FICA and Medicare that the city would pay. So the, the estimated benefits would be fifty-three hundred dollars, which is thirty-five hundred in FICA, in Medicare, and eighteen hundred in workers' comp. It's a little too high.
So I get thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-five in that position if you include those benefits. But, you know, only for you guys, if it's thirty-eight thousand, I mean, I'd like to get a ballpark about, because that general fund money is what would go back towards that hundred.
This is code enforcement.
Yeah.
Then how much? Were we talking about total? Twenty, twenty-something?
Well, base, base would be about twenty-seven, four.
Where are you going then?
Um, I think Jim had a question on the same page.
No, I, I'm moving on a couple pages.
My next page.
Forty, I got one at forty-one. It'd be about ten and a half thousand in benefits.
Okay, so you can adjust that in the column, and then depending on if council approves this, it would be, assuming, is there a consensus for that from you guys? Because otherwise, it would be to start adding it to my general column. All right.
If it's more, you would think.
All right, yeah. Okay.
Four, zero.
Yeah, no. Bear with me a little bit, because this has to go into explanations of a different page, so. I met with Public Works a couple of weeks ago, I think it was a Friday and a half ago, and Mr. Wayland was there, and he talked numerous things going back and forth. And, um, one of the things that I see in here is that we do know that we had four hundred thousand dollars budgeted for streets and sidewalks, and only about four thousand got spent in that this current year. And we don't do the work in-house, typically through contracted work. And so that same amount of money is on the budget at the end of this coming fiscal year to be spent on streets and sidewalks. So, if you go to page forty, line item, right-of-way maintenance. Uh, item forty-six, fifty, there's twenty thousand set aside for right-of-ways. Wouldn't that be included in streets and sidewalks?
It could be.
Okay, well.
It depends on the, you know, I suppose it would depend on, on the item that you're maintaining. I mean, if there's a, you know, a two hundred dollar item, I don't think that I'd put that into capital.
I don't know if it's mowing, but I presume it's mowing, because we've maintained all the right-of-ways. So if that's the case, that's twenty thousand dollars right there in general fund money. That could be tapped in or plugged into that one hundred thousand and that other three hundred thousand. And I'll get to that in a second. So just keep that running account number in mind, you know, mind for that twenty thousand. In addition to that, you go to page forty-one under infrastructure, I'm sorry, just go general fund, you've got improvements. I'm sorry, you've got street construction for fifty thousand, and then machinery and equipment for fifty-six thousand. Okay? If you took that one hundred and six thousand dollars out of general fund, and put that general fund money away, and then go to page fifty-three, and plug that money, or at least part of that work into items, um, account number sixty-three-ten and sixty-three-fifteen, then you would have, you just subtract that amount of the general fund out of the budget, and subtract that out of the proposed total of the streets, sidewalks, and curves, there's a curve again, and street construction out of the sixty-three-ten and sixty-three-fifteen, for a savings of a hundred and six thousand dollars to the general fund.
There's no real reason to do that. You can just cut the general fund directly. Because the infrastructure has, uh, a lot of, uh, reserves available. They're not spending their entire amount year over year as it is.
Okay, that being the case, that being the case, then I would like to see that the twenty thousand dollars in the right-of-way maintenance, go back to the general fund and just cut it out. Yeah.
So, I believe what we use that right-of-way maintenance for, um, is removing trees from the right-of-way, which we, I think that's where that seven thousand came from, damn, I'm not sure.
Correct.
The rifle robber. And I don't know if that falls under infrastructure, the street sidewalk and curb. If we are going to use that money to remove trees and roofs and that stuff.
Some of it is, uh, and again, I'm just looking very quickly at, uh, you know, there's, uh, some charges, uh, against that account for seven thousand dollars. Um, it's something called the steel products, kiker tree surgeon, edgewood landscape, crossing and painting, tree service. Um, these are all fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars apiece. Um, so it sounds like as we maybe do our maintenance, this maybe to dress the, dress the right-of-way back up to pre, to its condition.
Well, my, so, you know, that, actually, Henry Feeny brought up, we had, I don't know if I, we had a tree that the, all the limbs were grown into about four or five on, uh, power lines and that.
So you're advocating to keep the twenty thousand?
Yeah, I, we need some, because we have these trees in the right, what have, we just removed one, because the roots were grown in to, on our sewer system and, and backing it up, so I don't think we can use infrastructure fund for that.
If you're building a sidewalk, you could, but I guess not if it's on the mall. Okay, then leave it alone, then, never mind, scratch it off.
I go back to forty-one just real quickly, a real simple thing, maybe I just don't quite understand. But there's several locations from here forward, where we're showing salary cost, and we're showing benefit costs that are basically equal to or more than fifty percent. And either one of you just, what's, well, I hear you're showing, like, uh, one of the, uh, item, first item one on page forty-one, which estimates salary cost for two part-time maintenance, fifty thousand. But you're giving a benefit of twenty-six thousand, which is more than fifty percent. So I just want to know, where, and even the one down below, where seventeen thousand for the stormwater maintenance, and you're giving them more than fifty percent, almost fifty percent for benefits. I just don't understand how you word that benefits coming from the seat with two half of the salary. I thought most of the other ones I looked at, it was like a third or less of that. And there's more of these as we go on, but, uh, like I said, I just don't know.
Well, I can, I can go through and show you what goes into that calculation.
Can you just explain one to me? I just, it seems to be, if we're gonna pay somebody ten thousand. I just, it seems to be, if we're gonna pay somebody ten thousand, we give them five thousand of benefits, we're actually paying them hundreds. Seeing that you're already screening that company, I don't know why they did that. I mean, if you got a good reason that I'm filing this, it doesn't make common sense. And there's several more that are like that too. I mean, even on page forty-four, you're paying a part maintenance point two six, or you're giving them benefits of twelve thousand seven, more than fifty.
The calculation of benefits includes not only health insurance. Includes.
So is it because of there's...
It includes FICA and Medicare, includes retirement, includes not health insurance, life insurance, workers' comp costs.
So is it because their salaries are so low, the benefits are still the same for somebody at ten thousand, point thousand?
The health insurance and life insurance, okay.
So that's why it's supposed to be...
So, yeah, so someone making twenty-five thousand dollars a year, five thousand dollars health is gonna be twenty percent. Of someone making fifty thousand dollars a year is gonna be ten percent.
Okay, so, so some of these could be fifty percent just because of the low salary.
Correct.
Okay, that's why I wanted to...
And then you've always got almost eight percent on the FICA Medicare right off the top, plus the workers' comp.
That's really all I want.
Again, we're at a hundred and fifty percent mod ratio, mod factor, which kind of drives that cost up a little bit. And some of those positions are higher risk.
I, I, that makes sense to me. But going back to page fifty-three that Maria brought up too, on the nineteen-twenty budget, five hundred thousand dollars for total cost. And up to now, nothing's been used, but we're asking for five hundred thousand more. I mean, we, we got a hundred thousand for street sidewalk construction for our territory, but it showed that we haven't spent it.
Right.
So if we haven't spent it, then why do we have, basically, we're just carrying it over, we're not adding it.
Right, and that, that was a similar question I had is, why are we, why did we have three hundred thousand dollars in that street budget on page forty-one?
I mean, it's because we have a...
Well, we're not using any of the infrastructure. So we pulled fifty out to leave fifty in just for, I'm gonna call them contingency, I don't like that word, but but that's why we pulled it out, because we're not spending any in the general fund and the infrastructure fund is right there. And I think, well, Mark wants to say something, but I'm, I'm gonna jump ahead of him here and say, that's why we hired back at the end of the table there and spend all that money.
Well, I, I also, I actually like to see us spend that money. We've had complaints about these things not being taken care of.
Correct.
So we're here, so.
Or is that lacking personnel, is that the problem?
No, this Maria found out, she sent me an email, she's not correct, these people. And I told her, yes, we found out, Dan and I, when we went through our, when we started budget classes, we sat, well, we didn't have a director, he was it. And we didn't have a public works director, so we sat down Rick and Robert and, and they're great guys, field guys. Rick's finding out, they're doing anything for you and working hard, but they do nothing about the budget. And the first-line supervisor, I'm saying, not saying they should know a lot, but their, their last director, nothing against the last director, they love the guy, but he didn't have a chance, he didn't sit down with them and go over the budget. So Robert didn't even know there was, he came to get some, he told me he needed some sidewalks fixed and then they were taken out of the wrong place, he didn't even know that there was money in that. We've got road repairs that need to be done. And again, I don't blame him, he's never been sat down and talked about the budget, fact that he found out, he, we, other than Randy LaBelle, who obviously came from the sheriff's office, we haven't even, we don't have a first-line supervisor, I've never gone any turn to a first-line supervisor, live on budget. So, this year, as I told Maria, my plan was to sit down with Dan, but unfortunately, Dan's leaving us, I'm gonna talk him into staying a couple of days, I don't think it's gonna happen. But I'll be sitting down with, with our new public's work director and we're gonna go over and this is what's in your budget, this is where it comes from. So, I know I'm going along, but sure, it's gonna be spent this year because we have roads, we have sidewalks that need to be fixed.
And those are all pretty much farmed out anyway. So it doesn't require staff on our part to have one for that.
So, let me make this correct, and the five hundred thousand is just being carried over to next year, we're not adding five hundred thousand this year's budget.
That's, well, it is being carried over and there's ample funds if we go over that five hundred to make an amendment.
Okay, great.
Budget, I'd like to see it get spent.
I'd say the work is done.
Okay, thank you. And so that infrastructure right here, I just got a graphic, it's projected to be somewhere around the five million dollar mark in reserves by the end of this year. And we've basically taken about one point one million every year out of that, into that account. And if we were to do that, if we can just make sure that we, we're on the same two pages, I guess forty and forty-one, as far as getting a consensus on these changes, parting that page forty-one, that fifty thousand, what's left in street construction, we had some consideration, we talked a little bit about perhaps moving that up into the signs account, which is the third line from the bottom on page forty, it's budgeted five thousand. And we're starting, we wanna start a project that basically re-signs the state over a period of, I don't know how long, Jay Robert has an estimate, but two to three years, I would imagine.
We need that badly.
And so, before we pull the entire fifty thousand dollars out of there, out of street construction, we should probably, that was part of what I was earmarking to move up into signs, but I didn't want to do that until we got...
That can't be taken out of the infrastructure, signs?
Out of the infrastructure, I don't lose.
So when you build a new street, you can't pay for it, well?
Well, that's building a new street.
Yeah. So what you're saying is the fifty thousand that I mentioned on page forty-one where it says street construction, you're saying you want to keep that fifty in there because you want to use that for signs?
I'd like to, and even today, if we, if we can agree, move part of that and then...
Because five is too little, correct?
That's, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think...
That was what your discussion was.
Yeah.
I think, I think yours was to move twenty-five, I think that was...
Well, I changed my mind, you're... I mean, if you've got, if that's what you want to do, but, you know, I'd like, I'd like to see it get done, you know, we, we make these changes and we, we are all on the budget, everyone's aware of it, you know, it'd be nice to get it done.
If we, if we keep all the staff, then we'll get it done.
Okay, so, with that in mind, in the, going back to the general fund on page forty-one, you had machinery and equipment of fifty-six thousand dollars, that was two trucks.
Correct.
So why can't that come out and in from? If it's one...
Who says that it's not allowed?
Okay.
Infrastructure is basically purchased property for parks, public safety type items, for example, brush truck in two years will come out of there. Machines, the bunker gear comes out of there every year.
Okay, so also on page forty, there's, it's, I know, again, nickel and diamond, there's twenty-five hundred dollars in there for streets. Again, streets is popping up again and it's, it's the same thing, it's street construction on page forty-one, streets on page forty, you know, there's five thousand, what is that for? I'm sorry, it's twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred, I can't say specifically, I can look and see what was charged to that account, the eighteen hundred dollars year-to-date. And based on the, the object number being in the five thousands by, by being fifty-three twenty, it's some sort of supply that was charged to that account.
Okay, so so far, we've got thirty-eight thousand of code enforcement, that's been removed, sixty thousand from the insurance premiums, which I don't know if those were back, back in someplace else there, but, okay, moving down then. So what you're saying is that you want to keep a portion of that fifty thousand that's in there for street construction, but you didn't say all of it. And from what I see here in, in the staff or the signs maintenance, they're not just doing signings, they're doing other things. So, do we really need that fifty thousand in there for signs? I'm sorry, for street construction on page forty-one.
That, again, I believe that we've had several discussions on, on the budget itself and if council comes to consensus that we don't, more than will you pull it out?
I prefer to pull it out.
I prefer to have them spend them. I prefer to have them spend them.
But they're spending streets money to the tune of four hundred thousand on page fifty-one.
But you need a portion of it per sign, the question is, how much do you need per sign?
Total of twenty-five thousand, move twenty in there, thirty to think of.
Okay.
Am I opposed to that?
So then I would say twenty thousand, right? Yeah.
They would say thirty.
Thirty, you already got five thousand. Base inclusion of five thousand, that is the line.
Okay.
Okay.
Thirty.
Okay, what else you got?
So, general fund, page forty-three. Let me just get my brain wrapped around what I have here for a few seconds.
Anybody else have anything?
Oh, yeah, I can remember now, sorry. On the streetlights, traffic signals, which was account number forty-three twelve on page forty, I know that we rehabbed all of our streetlights, the LED, and that price typically is supposed to go down, I understand it's about eight thousand dollars a month, and we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That actually is going to go up slightly and they just started the project, I think, last month, because they were way behind because of COVID. And we just got the email from them and they just got the signed proposal, I believe within the last thirty days, so they're basically just in the process of starting. But the monthly fee goes up like about two or three percent because it's, even though they last longer, they're cheaper to use, it still costs them more to install it and then costs more than whenever they have to replace it. So I think it was like a seven or eight thousand dollar total increase for streetlights.
I think it went up from about seventy-eight hundred to eighty-four hundred.
Yeah, it wasn't a lot, but it was, I mean, it was worth it, but like I said, they just started that program in the last thirty days or less.
Okay, so the next item I had was on page forty-three, other contractual services, item number thirty-four hundred, three four zero zero. You know, this has kind of bounced around and it just seems like it morphs into whatever, it just morphs every time it comes on the budget. The original sixty thousand that was placed in that line, I was having the general fund, was for a plan for the mall and landscape and cutting trees and doing some kind of a plan of, you know, when to mow, when to trim, when to fertilize, when to do this and when to do that. And now it's turned into, we're gonna hire two people to mow the lawn with it and consult it out. It was three of this.
But the last time that we talked about it, we talked about putting the sixty thousand dollars in there to our perfection of service and we were not going to do that. The, we're not gonna hire a person, right?
I, I, I don't know how it started up here, but I can tell you, they were going out, did out, we pulled it in, we were gonna go back out, no, so at least three of you guys decided we wanted, I think we ought to contract the mall.
Yeah.
Mowing it's just too much on our staff right now and you want to do it every day, but that's not my decision. I mean, but we need to know which way we want to go because I can only say I've heard both ways, I don't know which way started.
Did we ever get any consensus?
I don't think so.
Yeah. The, the bid went out and then was pulled back.
Yeah.
Okay. It got pulled after I made a comment about it because it was for a contract service, which was only gonna mow and maintain, but it wasn't gonna do anything to fix the electrical irrigation. None of the other things that make the mall look pretty, you know, it's about beautification of our downtown, this also would have included funding for, you know, getting whatever needs to be done to the triangle and just having our parts look exemplary. So, and I remember when we made the budget, it was decided it was a one-time thing because it's general fund. So all of a sudden now, it's turned into two more staff, when the streets department is hiring three more people already.
Not two more.
We got, we got two for the signs.
No, it's, I thought you meant, I didn't say, uh...
Well, no, well, that's what it was discussed, we're gonna hire more people, then now it's gonna be contracted out because our staff can't do it. But yet in this budget, we've got three more people for streets and equipment, but yet you still want to farm this out.
But they're not gonna be mowing.
Well, just gonna be mowing?
No, they won't be, they're gonna be putting up signs, you guys are mowing.
Well, yeah, I, I know it's not an everyday, eight-hour day thing, but what I'm getting at is, I am not in favor of contracting this out because then we're gonna have this forever. And, you know, we were told time and time again, we, we need something to get it going so that we know what to do with it, a, a calendar of, of maintenance, because we've never had that. And now it's working into an eighty thousand dollar contract.
Well, how much would it cost for you staff to do it?
If you have a new provision, it'll be more than eighty thousand.
That's what I'm saying, we don't, we never got any bids, we don't know what the bid would be, you know, we don't have the thirty, fifty, a hundred.
Now, because the bids, when it got bid out, it got bid out under the, the different pretenses.
So let's bid it out first.
Well, what are we gonna do then, you want to bid it out for maintenance and just the mall because we have other parts? You know, or are we gonna bid it out for...
Well, most of the beautification usually comes down to the mall because it's the most traveled area, what everybody sees, so if you're gonna get a phone call and I have that, then it's gonna be on the mall, that's why we decided to contract that out, so it'll be done right every time, didn't have to worry about.
Unless you live on the south side, and then you're gonna get our calls all the time. See, my thought was that it was to contract the mall area out and then use the other staff to do the other area.
They wouldn't be spread so thin, so they wouldn't be spread as thin.
Yeah, so that's what I thought the last conversation was about, so I may be wrong.
I would just be interested to see what a contract would cost. We don't know what that's gonna be. We don't know if it's gonna work out to be cheaper or more expensive.
E- every time we try to talk about that, it was stymied because of the master plan. We were gonna have a master plan and that master plan ain't a master plan.
We don't have a master plan.
There's no such thing as a master plan for the mall.
No, the gold one, like I said.
We all wish to have one, but we never did that.
Right, so what we gonna do now, Stan?
That's what we're trying to figure out right now, what we want to do.
Master plan?
No, listen to me, do we want to put it out for bid or do we want to hire people to do it?
My thing is to put it out for bid, that's what Brittany Gray's saying, put it out for bid and use our staff to do the other areas of our city.
I would like to at least know what the bids are gonna be, yeah.
Well, if you've got eighty thousand dollars in your budget, your, your bid's gonna be eighty thousand dollars.
I strongly disagree, they're gonna be eighty.
Well, my, my opinion, first of all, I think that those that are maintaining and mowing the mall area are doing a fantastic job. I actually see green grass all year long, which is something we haven't seen in years. So I give a lot of commendation to those that are doing that work. But I think the contract work that I'm talking about would be to upgrade it and develop it and maybe beautify it. And that may be a one-time thing, to get somebody in there and, you know, cut the dry trees properly, get rid of some stuff, add some stuff, get expert advice and have them do that work for us and then see if we can have the people to, to do the maintenance. So maybe we can have somebody do that one year and then use the other people to do the other locations and then see if we have enough people to come back after a year of them upgrading the mall, but then just maintaining it.
Yeah, my only caution about that is that anytime you're doing landscaping, if it lapses one year, it's all gone.
Yeah.
It has, it has to be taken care of.
Plant mortality.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just, you know.
I understand that.
So if, if, let's just say the bid does go out, would it be able to include at least, you know, rehabbing the irrigation, we have the electrical, all of those things that they call...
Whatever we put in there.
So, you know, when the original bid was going out, it was just for two people to mow.
Yeah.
So if we have the ability to look at that and say, okay, I'd like to add a sin, you know, decorate the four corners of Lincoln Avenue with some beautiful flowers, do the Tippity Tippa Highway twenty-seven and Main Street, do some pollinants around the trees down on the south side triangle, things like that that are very specific to those areas, then we do have spot beautification, which is what I think we need.
Right.
Just mowing isn't enough.
All right.
So, you know, whatever the bid ends up being, it would be for beautification slash improvement and maintaining of those beautification efforts, you know.
And that's fine. And I agree, actually, I mean, my first guy, I asked Kim, you know, it's like you go to some of these other cities and see how beautiful things work, they, they put bids out, let's get, you know, the warning they're using, because what we did have, I talked to Robert, was just kind of mowing thing. We agreed with him on that, but. As Brenda said, we'll free our people up to mow in these other places because. If you ever ask, I think a lot of new physicians have none from mowing and. I've asked Rick to look at scheduling because our guy, our guy's mowing. Half the time in our backyard, because I have to drive it. And I've asked him to look at maybe changing things and how it work out there, so I I think it would greatly help us. When I first guy I was against, I left in-house, but I really think for the mall to look good and rather call them for bubbles and take care of them. I really think that contracting out the right way, that we're gonna do everything, like the mayor says, you gotta see how these quotes come in.
I also think we have some local companies that would love to take over that project and not really uh, try to milk us. Because they would love to be able to have that on their resume and saying, look at the mall in Avon Park. That's what my company did, yes, because most of the large companies, but there's a few in Avon Park. That's exactly what they've done because I've worked with them and they will cut their price if you bargain with them correctly. To do a job so that it looks so great that they can brag about it, people can see it and people say, who does that? Then they can raise their hand and that's us and that's how they grow. I've built one company that's grown several hundred percent because I worked with them fifteen years ago. So I I think that the, with proper negotiations, we could get one of these companies to give us a, a fair bid to get it started, maintain it. And uh, and and not really make it that expensive, even though I will say, uh, you know, it could be, you know. Couple thousand dollars a month, but then, then they have to go with add-ons after that, you know, we need to add this and this and this. And get approval after the fact to spend a couple thousand dollars for these plants and that plants. And then we can just do so much as of time, so. I I I think that's something we should at least look at and get a, get a bid and say, hey, you know, you give us a bid, what do you wanna do, what are you gonna charge for it? And then see if it meets our needs and meets our prices and uh, get somebody to negotiate the prices and I think we could uh, get a winner here.
Well, if we go out the bid, we're not gonna negotiate, you know, what we want, but I hear you because.
They could come in, they could come in under the bid process, you know.
But we have heard from one, maybe two, that, no, I mean, had us talking, but you say, man, that's what they have to call.
Absolutely.
So going back to page forty four. From what I see here, there's three people added for these streets and parks. It's two for the signs and one for the parks. It's written down on the bottom, three forty four, item three, park request one truck. And also with number one, it says add uh, full time parks maintenance. So we are, so there are extra people added in there, so if we're gonna take the mall and farm it out, do we still need to hire another person?
Yes, because right now we only have one person to do the parks. And they, they can't keep up.
I thought we had more than one. You see more than one.
Well, that's because something that I see is probably our one maintenance, that's mowing a lot of the time, but we only have one person.
So this extra truck, equipment, lawnmowers and meat equipment would be going to that second person?
Yes. And sign guys don't need one because we're gonna take the old cans, but then.
We're talking about trucks, Rick is here. Have you uh, downgraded or come to a total amount of vehicles? Do you agree with what's in the budget now that we would need?
Yeah. We're showing free replacement uh, vehicles and CIPs. Uh, and then one new one, uh, that so far, uh, from what we looked at, that would work.
The homemade, what's the total amount of vehicles we're looking at purchasing next year budget?
I'm sorry?
What's the total amount of vehicles? I think one time it was eleven. I know one time you said that three people could use one truck and so on.
Yeah, that was for the storm water. No, 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 that was for extension of water and sewer line.
I don't know, we definitely flip through, but I don't have it right.
Alright, I'm ready to move forward.
If there was just one other little one here, give me just a second. Yeah, under general fund. Page forty three, it said mall maintenance. Ten thousand dollars. Can you see what that's been spent on? Because that's another expense on mall, we're gonna be doing ten thousand dollars for a contract service, we need that ten thousand of mall maintenance.
Well, I was looking up, I think it's for pipes and pumps.
Yeah. Changes and things like that. I'm sure of it because I've looked it up before, but. I got it timed down on my. Well, we spent six thousand on that account so far this year. I don't think ten thousand is uh, you know, that much of a stretch. For that, that remains.
And there's also sprinklers of five thousand in there that didn't get spent either.
That's true.
So Dan, you were saying the infrastructure account is pretty much flush to an extent. We need more, we can always come back and do stuff there.
Yep, so the mall maintenance was the Bagwell lumber, Palmer electric, Summers irrigation, the ball bin. City electric, this kind of uh, Griffin fertilizer. Edgewood landscape was the biggest one that was about twenty seven hundred bucks. Different electrical, uh, electrical wholesalers, wholesalers.
Okay. So then when you go back, I'm gonna, I'm done with that section of the general fund. Um, on page fifty three. Going back to the sidewalks curves reconstruction of four hundred thousand and then these storm water projects of a hundred thousand. When it comes to the sidewalk curves and street construction, how are we gonna gauge what needs to get done first? I mean, is it gonna be, how are we gonna plan for that?
There was a listing that we had before. No, we didn't, yeah. Just before you all came up, because I remember that that was to you, Cornell, Cornell, there was supposed to be sidewalks. Put from Ridgedale on Cornell all the way down and that was in twenty twenty one.
I think you're right.
Yeah. Okay, so it's in the CIP, yeah, CIP, I thought I was trying to think.
In the sidewalks, I think I put an email to you. I told Robert, if we've got my abilities, we're, you know, proof, we're on grid, I'm gonna trip and get hurt, you know that. I think those are the first things you need to fix. And then beyond that, we know that three of that, you know, the council be involved, but yes.
Well, she said it's already in her CIP, so I'm looking at that, it's already in the site.
I didn't see it in there, but it was supposed to have been in there or it would have been there last, uh, before we just came.
Yeah, in, in previous years, going back quite some time, what they would do is the staff would identify the projects that they thought needed to get done. Typically, they would have in one of the council meetings, they would have the council during a project, you guys can identify. Kind of mull it over a couple of times before the budget process happens. And then everybody had an opportunity to sort of put what they felt was necessary.
And in the thinking, it probably works for Eric, I mean, as he got here late to that, but he's working on that. Amongst his other main things, we're back on right now, but to come up with a list, instead of just, let's go get this, now let's go do this.
Right.
He, he's working on that, he's uh, clearly pretty organized.
Yeah, we, we do have schedules, but they get uh, they get shifted on failing, but we're working to straighten that out and and make it pretty ready. Very good. Anything else?
Not for me.
I know you got more.
No, no, can you see here? We got page sixty two. Actually fifty nine, but it's CRA, we can just do CRA really quick. That would be a lot easier, I guess. Um, I was under the impression that you cannot use CRA money for repairs and maintenance. And it's budgeted in there at seven thousand.
Other repairs and maintenance.
Yeah, for the number twenty six and thirty, I just want to double check with um, statute and ensure that that's something that's allowed, but.
No, it's never been spent.
But anyway, that was just a little side.
That's just, basically, that's a placeholder. Um, we met with the advisory board, um, we're trying to. Basically to say, here's pile of money and you know, kind of allocate to where you think you'd like to see it. If it's, you know, side brands or or uh, membership news, travel, whatever it might be. And again, that can be uh, reallocated.
It might need another line item because I do know that you can't use that for me.
Well, it's restricted, bring some water improvements. So if the side brand really takes all the maintenance.
Yeah, but the CRA, the airport cannot, cannot apply for a CRA, it's intended for businesses. I don't know what you would call that, whatever, why not?
You're not proving for it's more of it.
So, I mean, make up a, a, another name. What is South Canadian Street now in your names?
That could be a number.
Yeah, Matthew Grant or something, yeah, but anyway, that just needs to change.
Sixty two.
Look, I'm almost done here.
Are you? Before you move on, let me just ask the question, why does the airport in the south side CRA on page fifty nine and fifty eight?
Zero.
On page fifty eight and fifty nine. Have you got any? Because you don't have anyone in voice. Is that where that, oh, okay.
So. I may have asked this question when I met with public works, but on page sixty two, there's a hundred and four thousand dollars there under contractual service. And it's jumped from four thousand last year, you spent seven thousand this year, it's never been above ten thousand for that account, but now it's a hundred and four thousand.
There was a line video. Right, that was in lieu of the four hundred thousand dollars for the camera truck.
Okay. In regards to. Just FYI, it said one oh four on the column, but it is narrative, it says a hundred thousand, it's a four thousand dollar difference.
Well, the original budget was four hundred and we increased to a hundred.
Okay.
To get to one oh four.
My eyes got stuck on that, so. Okay, page sixty five. Now, what I did with page sixty five is I compared it to last year's budget. And um. In last year's budget, it was relatively the same, like things have just moved over and I understand that there's been a big truck that's been ordered and hasn't been yet. Um, that was for the mechanic, I believe. So, and I don't recall because the last year's budget doesn't have a descriptive um, lines of each individual equipment replacements. It just says machinery equipment and big lots of. Yours Dan gives us a more breakdown of items and stuff, so. Um, and when I look at that, you know, we had budgeted six forty five, six hundred and forty five thousand for that. And this year we're budgeting seven hundred, I'm sorry, we ended up budgeting seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And that same line item, and using sixty four hundred, has. One million thirty thousand. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Okay. So during last year's budget, we talked about, you know, postponing some of these purchases. Uh, one in particular was the boom truck because we only have one lift station that required a big boom truck. But yet we had um, trucks that could lift out the lift station units out of the other lift stations that we had. And the only reason why we were buying that one was for the new core lift station. And it was suggested at the last budget that we set aside maybe forty thousand dollars if we had the rent one. We'll find out if we could use it on Sebring or the county or any other community rather than buying a brand new one, just the, the new core. Um, equipment, so. I'm requesting that council reconsider that one big huge expense. I know that it's coming out of the water system sewer services. And they're making, you know, plenty of money in that account, but nonetheless, it just seemed like overkill. It's page sixty five is narrative and then the line item is on page sixty three. It's the third account from the bottom row.
So the question was about the truck specifically. Could we use someone else's truck and or rent something?
Yeah, I'm trying to see if that's even, I'll just one here, give me a second. Am I looking at the right one?
I'm not seeing the truck on.
No, it might be on another one, I'm sorry, I, I may have confused myself.
It may be further, it may be in there eight oh one. Oh, eight oh one, this is oh seven five, as a department.
Okay, eight oh one, you're right. I had it written down correctly, I'm just gonna name it eight oh one, so that would go, that would take us to.
That's page uh, seventy one is the narrative and it goes back to note seven, which is page sixty seven.
Okay, before you jump down that way though, if you look at page sixty five however, there was a generator. And it said that it may be grant funded for eight hundred thousand.
Correct.
Okay, what if it doesn't get grant funded? Are we still buying it?
Uh, this, that's not, that was not my intent when I put the, the budget together. There's a revenue, there's eight hundred thousand on the revenue side. Um, and this is one of about only two or three brands um, that are in the budget because I took the position that. We would just amend the budget as we receive grants as opposed to putting all these grand items in there and then finding out. Uh, you know, we got twenty, last year we had twenty four million dollars in expenditure budgeted and you know, the reality is, you only spend eighteen, or this year's budget, eighteen. A lot of that was grant money, but.
This one you did put in.
Correct. And that's why I noted it specifically that it may be grant funded and that there's a revenue source also included with this. If we don't get the grant, then I guess we gotta make the, this decision is being made. Uh, I thought my understanding, we discussed that, that other Rick said we needed badly. So whether we get the grant or not, we need to get that. I think that's what he said. I don't know if he's here.
No, I mean, if it's, the money is there, then the money is there. Hopefully we get a grant and it offsets having to buy one for, you know, three quarters of the money dollars, okay.
If we have to make it last, we can make it last another year, it's gonna take a long contractual effort to, to keep it running. I do have one question maybe for Mark or whoever else was listening. Uh, with all these vehicles, do we have, still have a mechanic or sufficient mechanics to maintain all of the vehicles? He's got pretty busy.
Well, with the new ones, they're in the warranty, which is how, whether you change. And he's got business with.
So he gets that new vehicle without helping out the field a lot, correct?
Okay, so then, um, I'm not interrupting you. Okay. Okay. Let me just look at the account, I'm a little long on individual here. See, page sixty six, item five three six point three four. Other contractual service for one seventy five. I know that we've had pretty high contractual services there, but now that we have an engineer on board, is this, what, what kind of support for contractual services is that? I know that we've had pretty high contractual services there, but now that we have an engineer on board, is this, what, what kind of support for contractual services is that?
Going back to my.
The eight oh one account.
To my, I've never spent even a hundred thousand. Okay, so year to date now, we've spent a hundred thirty six thousand in that account. Let me just see what most of this is. Department of Correct, Kimmelhorn is in there, that is of fifty five thousand dollars, Department of Corrections is in there. We've got.
So we're keeping the Department of Corrections staff, which adds how many, then they mow, right? So between those four or five guys and our guys?
They, they maintain twenty seven with his countenance, but that, that's one of their big things, twenty seven.
Yeah. I'd rather see that. I'd rather see them take care of twenty seven.
Yeah. A worker, a worker?
From the present.
Yeah.
It's probably because we're not working, our corrections is on hold, I guess. Yeah, it's likely why that's a little bit more under spent, but I do look at, you know, what's some of the prior views and it is a little bit more.
Okay, and then the one that had me wanting to meet with Public Works to start with, which is on page sixty seven, item fifty six. Point sixty three dash ten, waterline extension miscellaneous. Budgeted seven hundred thousand last year, or for this current year, we spent two seventy two, we're rebudgeting another seven hundred thousand for this, this whole year. And in the description. This is where you have the machinery and equipment totally worth two million, we spent all this. And this is where I'm still a little dubious about how it works because I wanted to ask, I know that we have a mechanic truck on order, is that a three ton truck?
Are we talking about the seven hundred or the seven hundred and five? Seven hundred is just, that's just the, basically a rollover ongoing estimate of you know, waterline extension cost.
But it has the number seven attached to it as a descriptive narrative?
No, that's below, that's seven, that's seven hundred and five thou.
Yeah, but this time, I'm, I'm sorry, I just jumped to the, to the equipment on that. I understand the waterline extension, I know that we don't have a master plan and that Rick Whalen had said that there were near future projects that could be done out of that funding that the master plan can be worked on at the same time while we still expanded water and sewer lines, am I correct?
Do you want me to give a snippet of?
Well, your vision, yes, because I mean, that was the reason why I meant we guys.
Okay, yeah, the master plan is a good idea, any kind of utility that's more of a large, if you do a roadmap of where you're going to grow, come down. We don't have to stop extension before, stop doing extensions and wait till we got a master plan complete.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Okay.
Just for the, for the benefit of everyone in the room, because this is what I've been asking for six months.
Okay, yeah, master plans are a very good idea if you do, regardless of their size. They provide you with a roadmap of, of future growth. What needs to be taken into account is existing conditions of your system, in this case, let's say a water plant, waste water plant. And the lines and the extensions, the, the number of service halls that you have on them. And it gives you a good idea to grow and where your future growth is expected to be. You don't need to stop growing before that master plan is complete. What we did talk about was, it's imperative that we have fire service when we extend our lines. And so as an example, I was giving a six inch line extension where you may have a four inch could do. And the idea was to go ahead and have enough capacity to provide fire service along with the growth. But you need to be coordinating that with the company that you hired to produce your master plan. So that you have as much efficiency in the system as you can. And as you go along, you will converge the near term growth with the master plan. I hope that explained it.
Yes.
As I said before, I agree.
And this is what I've been saying all along.
Master plans are very important.
I think you're saying two very different things.
No, 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 that we can still lay water and sewer lines while this master plan, everyone has their cake and eats it too, basically what that is. That we can do a master plan and still do water line and sewer line extensions.
We do have to take long case by case, right?
Yeah, and I get that, I get that. Okay, so that, that clarified and thank you because it took us six hours to figure that thing out, right? Anyway, on this, let me just go back to where I was honed in on this other equipment sheets. What was it, it was an eight oh one account? On the.
Tell my explanation number seven for the equipment.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so getting back to that explanation of the equipment. The boom truck there for a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars is coming back to us. This was on last year and that's when I was mentioning that we had talked about, just if you had the red one, we can rent one or we can see if another community has one. You know, economies of scale and see if we can work it out with someone else rather than buying one just for you.
Well, that's an idea of go ahead and trade in now, system boom truck for a larger one that would, that would have the capacity to pull a pump down on the core, we're still evaluating that. So.
What does that mean, that you want to leave that one eighty five in there because you want to trade one out?
I, I would defer to one eighty five in there.
Okay, while talking to you guys, the other supervisor, Rick, stated that you did not need three guys to do the water line and sewer that you could get by with two. And I'm holding him to that, so can we remove one of those people out of this budget?
That's completely news made, but I, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to investigate that.
He said he was gonna have a hard time finding two additional staff as it is. And that he likely wouldn't find people that were trained for that position for quite some time, is that him texting you right now? But anyway, he was, he, he stated such that, you know, that two were sufficient.
Okay, I'll have to take a closer look at that and get with Rick in the budget.
But the budget, have you finalized tonight?
Yeah. Rick, are you on?
Yes. Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, some explaining there, Rick.
Well, well, we, I, I think, I think there's a, a little misunderstanding between what I was taking or what she took there. I was, I was talking about an additional two people to the existing crew, that's what I thought she was talking about, so. You still need three people after to do that work, so I apologize if there was a miscommunication there.
Back several meetings ago, when you said want three and you said, well, just go ahead and hire, if you can hire two now, let's hire them. Well, you meant for the three people.
Yeah.
How I took it, well, he took it, is he gonna get three to run lines plus two extra guys? So that's.
Yes, I misunderstood, I, I apologize.
So there are how many vacancy, we're talking, what is this? This is C and D technician, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we have three vacant positions. And we're adding three, is what you're saying.
These are three of them. No, there's, there's one current, the, in the C and D and we're adding three.
Okay, if you're adding three, then you have four. With three in this budget.
One was previously.
Well, one, one was previously occupied until the twenty ninth, when he resigned.
So we're hiring six people.
No, no, with the crew that we already had up until the twenty ninth. We were, from my understanding of the budget was to add three more C and D techs. So we would have had whatever we were at before the six that we already had, plus three more. But we had one C and D tech resign on the twenty ninth. So now we're taking the three that this budget is asking to add on, plus we're currently trying to fill the one additional spot from the resignation.
Four people in U C area?
Yes.
It's only three new, though.
Three of whom are new.
Three, yeah, so you, you still end up with the same amount.
Yeah.
But, and the three were put in to when there were the decisions made to run new water. And if we weren't going to run new lines, they were going to be fired.
And then we had a truck to go with that, okay, so.
Yeah, we started with three trucks and Rick said if they're working on one crew, they need a four year old truck.
Okay, so moving on. I noticed that we have what is it, there's we ordered a, a truck for the mechanic that's not in yet, correct?
Yeah, that was ordered before.
Correct.
Okay.
We ordered two trucks, one I can deliver Friday.
And it wasn't F three fifty.
So is it any one of these F one, F three fifty?
I think, I think both, I don't know about these, but I know the one that came in.
Okay, so why do we need two five fifties? Why do we need two three ton, three ton trucks? If the mechanic already has one. I mean, that's to haul big heavy equipments, I presume, but.
Yeah, one of the Rick.
Yeah, can you hear me?
No.
Okay, well, the five fifties are because of the gross weight of the vehicles, I mean, you know, you put the excavator on there, you're looking at almost, you know, nineteen tons. You put the skid steer on a trailer, you're looking with the trailer and everything, you're looking at about ten ton. You're really pushing the weight of, of the duty of the, the three fifty, you know, and I was looking at the longevity versus, and the safety hazards of the heavier truck to pull the equipment with. So that we had to decent sized vehicles for when we got, you know, a large break and we need the excavator and we need a skid steer out on a job, we would have two vehicles to pull them with.
So were these in the budget last year that got cut or are these added into this, this year, because I don't have a listing from last year?
No, ma'am, they, they.
I'm just gonna make, make my, my point here, we have state of the art equipment, awesome equipment, brand new equipment and it's like, you know, do we need everything on this list? You know, I look at what's out there right now and, and we just seem to keep buying all this heavy duty equipment because we've got the money. And so is that the reason why we buy it, because we've got the money?
Actually, I, I got the mechanic's manual, but I saw these. And he said two of them definitely need to be replaced, I mean, he's constantly working on the need to be replaced. Third one, I don't remember what one is, he said, if it can be replaced, it should be, I could probably run by, my word, but the two of them definitely need to be replaced. I usually like to get with mechanics and the ones that know on what vehicles they're, they're putting money in, I know one of them, they put a lot of money.
I believe the trucks that we're looking at replacing are anywhere from, you know, ten to seventeen years old.
Can we get a listing of the inventory with your ages on it? Then see which ones that you're gonna be scratching off, this will be after the fact because the budget will, like, was obviously gonna get approved tonight. So I'd like to look at an inventory list of exactly what we have that we're replacing with new ones. Because I, I want to see two for myself, his question's asked, we've said multiple times from, there's are people from the guys, because I know nothing about trucks.
Yeah, I mean, we sent that out some time ago.
I've got the list up right now. And so we're looking at replacing forty nine, three and thirty four, I'm just oh, here they are, right there, the three highlighted ones. So you got three is two thousand two, forty nine is two thousand four, and your thirty four is two thousand eight. Let me just, let me just do a quick, uh, breeze through. So we're gonna just scroll across.
Now, I know that those are old.
Those are mileage on those three vehicles as well, one seventy, one eighty and one fifty.
And those are diesel, right?
I don't know.
No, they're not all diesel. The F one three, the F three fifty is diesel, that one's been in the shop several times. One that Mark was talking about that we've got pretty high expenses on, it's, it's a duly, which when you're pulling the heavy equipment is way safer pulling the duly. The two F two fifties, one is a, I, they both might even be gas. And they're both single rear tires, which, you know, you have a blowout in the back with a, you know, an eighteen ton machine. You know, your chances are pretty good, they ended up off the road.
Can I ask a question? What, I, I, I understand that you would probably need a skid steer and an excavator on the same job. But what would the problem be with using one five fifty to bring one piece of equipment to the job and you go back and get the other? Instead of having five fifty?
Because usually when we're doing, when we're getting the equipment, it's because water's down. So, you know, you got two, two vehicles hauling two pieces of equipment out there, saving the time down on the customer, I mean. Ultimately, the goal for utilities is the least amount of time that somebody's out of water or the least amount of time that sewer's running down the road, so time is of essence. Yes, we could do with one truck, I would appreciate one truck, I'll take whatever you give me.
I guess you just got one.
So be it.
And then in addition to that, you have purchased one truck for the season, that, that's the one where it was gonna be three, now it's one, correct? Right?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And while we're on this, can I bring something up?
Sure.
Like, in last year's budget, the current year's budget, in the C I P, we had a replacement for the tractor in the, in the the bat wing mower for the wastewater treatment plant. And I had it all ready to go in front of you all back in July, then we found out they didn't have one. And looked all over the state to find one, with COVID and production, they were down. And I got with Dan and I said, well, we can't have this. They, they told us there's no way it can be here by the end of September and they don't know if it'll be October or November or December, they don't know. So I didn't bring it in front of you to purchase it because I know when I was at Sheriff's Office, if we couldn't receive it by September thirtieth, we couldn't buy it. But then the sheriff's office, the money goes back to the county. So Dan got with our outside auditors, it put in Larson. Actually, I had to give Dan a hard time because Mark is correct on this, and said, well, at least one of those correct. They said that you need to receive the item served before the year's end recorded in the current year as part of a budget. Though some governments do carry over in Congress, one year next, however, this is not a policy adapted to Maybach Park. So my request is if we carry over a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars to buy this very much needed tractor and bat wing, it's a total of a hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. This is something that we had already approved earlier, since we're posting carrying on in the next budget, I agree. So, does anyone oppose? Or we need a motion for that?
We'll entertain a motion.
We are waiting, I mean.
We'll have to vote to carry it over.
Oh, I'm hoping that we carry over the hundred and twenty two thousand dollars.
We're the bat wing tractor.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing them, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, so the issue of the trucks, the five fifties, are we going with two or one?
You all said.
I think let's start with one and see if we.
Yeah.
All right, so you can deduct seventy thousand from that budget. One item. Okay, what's next?
I'm done with that, the only thing I have left over is the CRA issue with the airport. I'm sending one else, I think he also can be seen on them. Or here and there.
Personally, I'm fine with the plan put forward of setting aside the hundred and twenty thousand total, so sixty from CRA and sixty from general fund. I would just simply like to have a little bit more involvement with the CRA advisory board as to what specifically they would like to see out there.
I agree a hundred percent.
Me too.
So, obviously, we don't need a motion at this point, though. It'd be approving the budget.
Right. So that being the case, um. Well, that's the next question. Um, so that would have been sixty thousand out of the general fund or airport, which still leaves a balance of sixty-eight thousand. One being the code enforcement person that's removed. And the thirty thousand taken out of the streets account on page forty-two revenue. So between that sixty-eight thousand, that goes back into the surplus of the general fund. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing that you break out the column items of the benefits when we drop the ben- insurance rates. So. That's how I come up with that number.
But. So as Dan stated earlier, we still have this year a surplus of out now roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unspent money.
As of Friday, that surplus was six fifty, but, uh, I, again, I've never gone through the entire closing cycle here. And there are going to be some adjustments. Conservatively, I'm saying those adjustments would be somewhere around four hundred, and then we're going to add two fifty
Okay.
to the surplus. Or to, to the reserves.
Our best estimate's right now that we'll still have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus from last year's budget.
The year we're in right now.
Yeah.
The twenty twenty budget, yes.
Right.
Plus, didn't you say there was a hundred and three in the coming fiscal year?
If it was a two mil.
If it's actually no.
Correct. He said one point three five mil goes flush according to the estimate. I would just simply add that we're probably going to have some additional, so I would support more like a flat one.
And that's what I was going to suggest. I'm okay with that as well. But what?
You say five? One mil.
Seventy-seven.
The way we go on point three mil, one mil.
I'm good with that, too. That would, you can have just under or just over, so.
That should put us very close to flush.
Well, I still could support that because, like, they kind of, people lost their jobs and insurance and stuff like that, so.
Okay, so, changes to the budget. Do we have everything in there that we could be ready for a vote on the millage in the budget at this point? Or anything else need further clarification?
I'm good.
Again, maybe?
I'm, uh, what's the final number we're talking about for the airport? I'm sorry, group. Is it sixty plus benefits? Is that?
It's not included benefits. A hundred and twenty altogether, but it's sixty. Okay, that would have been.
I'll see if CRA.
I'll see if I know. Okay, for the airport position itself. For the airport manager, thirty thousand coming out of the airport reserve. And thirty thousand coming out of the city's general fund.
Okay.
And then for the, um, marketing economic development position, it was going to be sixty thousand. That had to be broken out per CRA district, and I just did an arbitrary number here, but you may want to do a calculation that's more relevant to their actual revenue. I did twenty thousand out of Main Street, ten thousand out of South Side, and five thousand out of the airport, because they're in one. So that was a total of thirty thousand coming out of the CRA fund of their actual revenues. And thirty thousand coming out of the general fund.
And that, and the allocation on CRA is based on, uh, uh, revenue then, is that?
Correct. On that one, it's revenue. It wouldn't be coming out of any reserves.
Okay. And the idea is to have further meetings with the CRA advisory board on that. And everyone involved in the airport to, uh, try to spend that money more widely.
True, and on, on top of that, you know, considering that Main Street has, I think they have one hundred and eighty thousand per year revenue. They may pay for the bulk of it, but the reason why there's thirty thousand coming out of the general fund is because that CRA or that economic development position would probably be entire city, not just the CRA district.
Right.
And we have just as many businesses outside the CRA as we do in the Sierra, so that's why it's split down here.
So, but, so you're looking at sixty thousand dollars total?
And one twenty?
One twenty.
No, no, I meant, just, just for the airport manager.
Correct.
So you're talking about forty-five thousand dollars? Somewhere. I don't know what's going to cost an airport manager, but it sounds to me quite fast. Well, that's what we're setting aside so far, but, you know, if it works out to where the marketing person will cheaper, the airport person will more, vice versa.
Yeah.
Then we'll work that out.
And the sixty thousand for the, uh, like a profit about for the, um, economic development, that could be forty thousand, you know, we just don't know that yet. We just haven't.
And adjustments can be made. Okay. So do we have all those notes, Dan?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, so moving back, we will have the resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen to be the final adoption and final millage rate. Fearless attorney, we're reaching the city council, the city of Florida, adopting. Public rate is pretty big on the part for. Provided for public hearing, advertising the same, and for our section. Good, this will be a public hearing. Public hearing is now open for the final millage rate adoption. Anyone wishing to speak can now do so. Don't all jump at once. Seeing no takers, the public hearing is now closed. Bring it back to the council. I believe the proposal was for one mil. And we will entertain a. In motion, need to include the modification in the board's resolution. We, we couldn't hear you, dude.
Yeah, the, uh, resolution had, has blanks in it, and, uh, those blanks need to fill in. Can't pass it through.
Right.
And so, uh, in the motion, need to approve the resolution with information in the blanks. And, uh, I assume somebody needs to know that, that information before we pass the resolution.
Okay, we're gonna build it in with one mil in anticipation of the passing.
And, um, I did do the percentage, which is in section one, that the last blank was the percent, now be two point three two. Or two hundred thirty-two, I'm sorry. Two hundred thirty-two percent.
So somebody could. Yes. That's all things we filled in?
Well, everything else is one point zero. If you're going with one mil.
Right.
Somebody could do some move.
It's one, one point zero?
One point zero. All, all the other blanks except that very last blank is, it says percent after it, that would be two hundred thirty-two.
Is there a so move or resolution point point dash sixteen?
Did you so move it?
I'm asking.
Also move.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second. Once again, this is for approval at one mil. Are there any other questions?
I just want to be clear. On the resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen for the millage rate, the first paragraph has a blank. This said, um, it says it's to be one point zero per one thousand valuation. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay, then that, the, down below where it should be resolved by the city council of city of Avon Park, or section one. Says final millage rate issued by the city council shall be one point zero mils per one thousand for fiscal year twenty 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 twenty-one. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the next line is the, uh, second line has that. The one point zero millage rate is an increase of two hundred thirty-two percent to the rollback rate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the, the millage rates have to go up for this. So there'd be four zeros, one blank, two, okay.
Okay. All right, is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Council, Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes three in favor to the panel.
Thank you. Next up, we have resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen, to be adopted in the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty dash one twenty-one.
Uh, I mean, just, just a question to some, uh, is that sufficient vote? Think for that increase in the knowledge?
I guess just majority, yes.
Yes, it is, by the way. Yes, thank you. All the way to two, we could have gone, uh, much higher than that, with a, a majority. All right, thank you.
Okay, do you want to read the resolution, um, twenty twenty dash seventeen?
The resolution will be city council, city of Florida, adopting the continued budget of the city of Avon Park for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Provided for a public hearing, that will be the same as required by section two hundred and fifty-five, or statutes.
This will be a public hearing, resolution twenty twenty dash seventeen. Anyone wishing to do so can now speak. Seeing no speakers. Public hearing is now closed. Well, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve our resolution number twenty twenty dash seventeen, adopt the final budget for twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. Is that still the eighteen two fifty-two, that's still correct?
That would not be now.
Because they're worse than, than, uh, people. Can't make a motion without the amended aspect of it, and so.
Right.
You let them know what your numbers are.
But we can't say as amended. And, and this, that's what I wasn't sure of. It'd take me a few minutes to do that.
As amended to one.
But, well, I think, but probably the best thing then is just go on until we go. I don't know the answer to that question. I hate to do it wrong, so if you think you can calculate it, that's one of the business, come back.
Is that okay?
Um, if, as long as it got all the notes correct. The best of your knowledge.
I can try. Yeah. Will we take this up back at the end of the meeting? Moving on to.
Okay, so we have a motion with no second, so we just kind of move to you guys.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the capital improvement plan.
I just want to make one little comment that we just passed, and I think it's just relevant to this conversation. If you have a half a million dollars worth of private property inside a city, uh, of, of building, and it's worth a half a million, your taxes went up from a hundred and fifty dollars and you're three hundred and fifty. If you have a two hundred thousand dollar house or business structure, your taxes just went up from sixty dollars to two hundred dollars.
A lot of hard.
Very reasonable.
The median, uh, home value in Al Park, I believe, is somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And most people would have a home setting exemption at that point. Realistically, you're talking about.
Right.
Twenty bucks.
Right.
Yeah, that's it, twenty twenty-five, man. That's what I think of medium.
I didn't think it was capital exemption.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right, so the five-year capital improvement plan. Do we have questions, comments? Going once.
I think.
That will change based on, like, we pulled a truck out of there, and, but I did do a quick count, and I, Jim, I came up with nine vehicles plus a garbage truck. But now it's eight, because then we pulled there is that one.
Thank you very much, Dan. Okay, we will wait till the end of meeting to, uh, approve this as well. We won't have all the notes done by then. Moving on to item number eight, we have the minutes from September fourteenth, twenty twenty, and August twenty fourth, twenty twenty, budget work session. Any motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of September fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Second. And August the twenty fourth.
And August the twenty fourth.
And second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmembers Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion, Ashen, Gary.
Item number nine, we have the reappointing of housing authority board members, Jeff Brojek, George Wade, Ronnie Jackson, and Louis Munk. Entertaining a motion?
Motion that we reappoint the housing authority board members as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray? Yes. Councilmember Sullivan? Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Item number ten, we have the renewal of the Central Florida Regional Planning, Planning Advisory Services Agreement.
There are no changes to that agreement.
It's the same as last year.
We make a motion that we renew some of the Florida regional planning councils' planning advisory services agreement of the amount twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray? Yes. Councilmember Sullivan? Yes. Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yeah. Thank you. Item number eleven, we have resolution twenty twenty dash ten.
Yeah, Jeff Smucker's on.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Sorry, good evening.
All right, good evening. Um, I'll make this fairly brief, but, uh, if you got any questions, we'll go back and answer anything you got. Um, this is a request by Cruz, Cruz Griggs Incorporated. Um, the applicant's looking for final plat approval for a residential subdivision titled The Villas on Seventeen. Uh, this is a replat of the Pinecrest Lakes Residential Subdivision, originally recorded in nineteen thirty-nine. Um, the property is approximately four point one nine acres, located on the east side of Lake Lutila, uh, west of scenic highway seventeen, off of Hollyhurst Drive. Um, several years ago, the property had been, um, rezoned, uh, assigned a future land use to medium density residential and zoning of R two. Um, the plat that's in front of you all tonight is a subdivision of twenty-two villa-style dwelling units. Um, it'll be established for individual sale. Uh, and then the remaining of the property will include common yard and open space areas, which will be owned and maintained by an established homeowners association. Um, the preliminary plat was approved by the city in two thousand eighteen. Uh, following that approval, uh, the applicant began, uh, site improvements, including construction of a new private roadway connection, the Hollyhurst Drive, which is a, a county maintained roadway. Um, those improvements were completed and certified by the county in January of this year. Um, the property will be served by city's water utility, but will be, uh, served by septic system at this time, as the city's sewer is not currently available in this area. Um, the final plat's been reviewed by the city and the county, uh, and is in compliance with all subdivision's adding requirements of the city's land development code, as well as chapter one seventy-seven of Florida's. Uh, the one thing that we would add in the resolution, it's a recommendation of approval. Um, staff has requested a condition, uh, with the adoption, uh, or with the adopting resolution, that a declaration of covenants, restrictions, easements, and bylaws uh, be required to be established and recorded concurrently with the recording of the final subdivision plat. So essentially, that would be the, the recording of the homeowners association, um, concurrent with the, uh, recording of the final plat. Um, so with that, we'll, we'll answer any questions you all might have.
Hey, do we have a question? No, I just, uh, did those, and you talked about the, you're going with seven kick, not sure, and it's also going to be a final round of public.
Okay. Anyone care to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash ten with the, uh, staff changes?
Let me make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty dash ten, Villas on Seventeen, uh, with staff changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray? Yes. Councilmember Sullivan? Yes. Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed forward.
Up next, we have item number twelve, appointment of Alvin Dallas to the planning and building board. Before you, you have a application. I see Miss Gray, plus it's on the agenda. I'm assuming she knows who wants to make it. You have a question?
Yes, um, at the last meeting, I think you had asked for, uh, any volunteers that they need someone for the planning of the board, so I reached out to some people that I, I could have talked to, for different people, and this is the only one, this Dallas has said that you would put in an application, and you did. And, um. Another name always considered, considered, I like to be.
I see he's a young man, so he will probably be around for a very long time.
Got good qualifications, too.
You, uh, council has approved, um, uh.
You, uh, council has approved, um, and if we approve this for Dallas, that gives us a full board. Again, I would, um, like to request that we maintain the vote for one or two all committees, if, if you don't want.
Yeah, I don't think you want to close to that. Okay, do we have a motion to appoint Alvin Dallas?
I'm going to appoint Alvin Dallas, who is standing on the board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Sowolun, yes. Deputy Mayor Spurlock.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Next up, we have item number thirteen, this is a change order number one, Amber Taxway F. This is a old change order. Needs to be ratified. Kim, do you have further information on?
I guess, I, I don't know, uh, what happened with this, if I was giving it and it's overlookeded, or it was overlooked totally and I was never given it, I don't have the answer. The work has been done. It was for seventy-seven hundred dollars on the change order. Um, we just mainly need, uh, council to approve it, so that we have an official date for the mayor's.
Okay.
It was done back in April, it's like March or April.
Have they been paid for the change order?
I don't know that.
As far as I know, yes. I think this is the one mayor already signed, but we're waiting on the thing.
It says it's not David. Not David, we got O A on it.
Yeah, um, then we found out that, um, we couldn't find where it was.
The only council can approve, um, change orders, but you can't sign anything until the council has approved.
I think, I think we did, we just, it didn't get recorded properly.
Back in April.
Back in April, yeah. Okay, we have a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve item number E thirteen, change order number one, Amber Taxway F, Taxway.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Sowolun, yes. Deputy Mayor Spurlock.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item number fourteen, we have Resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen. Any policies in the picture?
Name reduction request, policy, conflicts, um, program, uh, we're trying to work with it and tweak it as we go, but just started it. Just to put something together, and based on my suggestion, that we have something consistent, and this is it.
Okay, do we have any, uh, changes or corrections anyone might add? Seeing none, entertain a motion, Resolution twenty twenty dash nineteen.
I'm making a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty nineteen, name policies in the picture.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Sowolun, yes. Deputy Mayor Spurlock.
Yeah.
Mayor Anderson.
Yeah.
Motion passed now.
Item number fifteen, interletual agreement with the county for the free removal.
Yes, um, this, um, came into us for approval, for free removal after emergencies such as hurricane, and, um, not perfect, but, but we need to have something in place for this season, which will be over another month, but, uh, don't want to have something. Uh, preferred to discuss a little bit more, but, um, Seabreeze already signed it, so we're off to go.
And the class it has not? The class it has not?
Not so far, but.
So this is only good for one year?
Yes, only goes through April, April. And, uh, we'll start discussion for things about new ones before that.
Okay, great.
So when will that be, Jerry? November?
Uh, maybe.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the interletual agreement with the county for the free removal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray, yes. Councilmember Sowolun, yes. Deputy Mayor Spurlock.
Yeah.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed now.
Next up, item number sixteen, we need to determine the date for ethics train.
If, if you want, you would ask him to do that in strange, or you report COVID hit and canceled it because of COVID. And, um, so, uh, if you want to have, we can reschedule it now. Usually like on Saturday, it's done in the past. It's up to you, do it on the week, or do it on Saturday, um, but, uh, just let me know, or you can do it online if you want. There is a free program for that, but, um, it's, you know, it's sort of like.
Does it take the time that you're on it, so that you're on there?
Put your ear out.
Like when you get a speeding ticket and you go in there, is it asking your mother's name and stuff?
Would it be possible for us to do a Zoom ethics training?
So it's, it's mandatory ten AM, I mean, is that the timeframe, or is it, is that how long it is?
Four hour train.
So I mean, if you weren't interrupted, couldn't you get through it fast?
Four hours, simply, four hours technically, it's four. Two, two, two big breaks, one of sunshine, one of COVID records. So technically, I have forty minutes of additional play there, but, um, I just need work results of strings, so I already have materials put together. But, um, if you're going to do, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, I'll do it, but I'd be charged for it, you know, the time. You know, and, uh, the state, this Zoom has a Zoom maybe can do as well. But if you want it personalized, based on, you know, what you do, I do try to do as much as I can personal, and, um, so on. But I just leave that up to you, Chris. I'm not trying to throw up money at you.
No, I like the fact that when you do it, if we have questions, you can answer the questions for us. I'm okay with, I'm okay in person, to be honest with you. It makes sense to person. You're kind of hard to understand.
Zoom. I said yes, but it turns out, just that the executive board came out on Thursday, and, uh, we found out about it on Fridays, and there was a rumor that they were going, the governor was going to cut us off, uh, as of today for virtual meetings. Uh, but actually, he's going to let it expire on Wednesday, apparently, unless, yes, not extended yet, as you know, the budget is still good until it's about the fifteenth, but there is no extension, uh, so far for these meetings, so you still have to have a physical form here, but, you know, there's, uh, exceptional circumstances, uh, associated with, um, people not being able to be here because of COVID, or, uh, because they're out of town, or things like that, and then, um, that would be your basis by which you could have, you know, people attend virtually or by telephone. But, so I, I think the answer to that is no, you can't. I guess we, we just thought, go back to person to person.
So that requires staff to be here as well.
Well, so man, one person had to take the minutes, because I always ask that you do it by workshop, just in case there's discussion that's, you know, uh, can be interpreted as sunshine. I hate to confuse my sunshine seven hours and have it five later.
Is your hourly rate due?
A hundred and seventy-five dollars a hour.
So a hundred and thirty-five times five, or do it online for you, that's the question.
Four, four hours, four hours.
Well, we love you, but I guess the cheapest way out is to stay, we want one, yeah, maybe next time.
But, like I said.
Your life is much more entertaining.
It is.
It gets a little dry.
But, but you'll have, you'll have fun, and then, like I said, I, I, I'm trying to go up against this. So I'm perfectly fine with that, especially not having to be upset.
Very good, we are on our own.
Okay, I have one other item, oh.
Yelled it.
One other add-on item, no, I'll comment on. The add-on item is, is on the desk, it's, it's an evaluation. I really would be glad, but I had a promise to, I think this too, so you can scroll on from October. So, um, yeah, break damage and all, I, I just got to relate for this, and, uh, so, um, please review this, it's for your review and comments, changes, whatever, let me know. Um, I would ask and try and approve it, we'll meet, we'll have it on the fifth, add to that agenda, so that that can be approved. And then, once it's approved, you can actually use it and start putting together every person, uh, everyone, the council members need to, uh, do this and follow the directions, and if you have a question, continue to call. I will be on vacation, uh, the end of this week, Thursday, Friday, and then all the following weeks, but I'll be back on twelve. But I'm going to attend the meeting on the fifth, virtually, as soon as I can, if I, if I can, so. And that stuff's somewhere.
Anyone have any questions on the draft report?
I haven't had a chance to go in immediately, I think you can fix some files, you just.
Yep.
Take it out.
Yeah, we're going to try to vote on it on the fifth.
The best thing is email, but if I'm on vacation, but, you know, or call me when I get back, uh, but you're going to, you're going to be trying to prove it on the fifth. I, I have, I sent to, uh, clerk, so she can, she can make the changes if needed, uh, but, um, because I won't have computer access.
Keep in mind, we're only approving the form.
Is that right?
It, you're, yes, the ordinance fifteen, twenty nineteen, cover that.
Health insurance.
The health insurance with the council.
Yes, we need to do that too.
I just remembered the two.
Well, I guess that's your ordinance, uh, health insurance, I guess.
Yeah.
Whatever you know, now.
Yeah, but obviously you're going to do something about it, right?
Yeah, so, um, and I suggested, since it's in your code, I get, some city put it that way, it goes by county, uh, others, um, through the, uh, council salaries. If I, it's done by resolution, uh, and then be, and your code, say the salaries will be on file with clerk, clerk's office, and so certainly, uh, for the record request, um, some people prefer to have it by ordinance, so it requires two meetings and a public hearing. I leave that up to the political minds, the, I'm just, the options are, we can keep it this way, in which case I just need to have numbers to fill in, and I can get it done quietly, I'm going to go to Kim. Uh, you can approve it on the fifth, or at least, or even if it's ordinance, or approve it if it's a resolution. Please let me know.
Okay, comments, council? Uh, I, Mary, can I just, one thing came up, and David, you probably have the numbers, I didn't. In the ordinance, it's showing the amount of your increases to be the current silver plan right now. So with the new one of the, whatever it's called, it's.
The bronze.
The bronze, whatever it's called, H, that's a, um, that would lower it on, as far as insurance you're getting when you're, for the pay, um, so. That's something to discuss. Um, actually, David, I worked up the numbers, he checked the math, if you can share that with.
Yeah, I can, the, uh, so the numbers that you had last year, when you put this ordinance into effect, uh, went from the original base pay of two hundred and fifty dollars up to seven hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. And that was to cover the difference of the silver plan health insurance premium of four sixty-five eighty-eight. Um, and this year, the HSA plan is, uh, three hundred and seventy-four dollars for the premium, which is a ninety-one dollar and eighty-eight cent reduction, um, difference. And so therefore, that would take down your amount of seven fifteen eighty-eight down to exactly six hundred and twenty-four dollars per month. Um, and that doesn't include the mayor with the additional rate of twenty-five percent higher.
So this is just for the insurance?
Yeah, this is just, this is just the offset where before, um, you were being given the difference of the cost of the insurance plan, and then how you worked it, where you could either pay the money that you were given in addition to your salary to pay for that insurance, or you kept it in your check.
So, so this, um, the two hundred and fifty dollars that we were getting, that would be two hundred and fifty dollars plus the three hundred and seventy-four dollars?
Correct.
Okay. Would be dropped the silver plan to the HSA, that would be different. So that number's been, that's why Jerry had said that ordinance will change year to year, because it's depending on the increases of insurance, or if they get blocked.
So like Jerry was saying, the ordinance requires two readings, a public hearing, and one, the ordinance, you want to have it.
Whatever makes it the most transparent and beneficial to the city's records, it doesn't make any difference.
That would be the resident, that would be the ordinance, if you want the most transparent.
So then our first approval would be at our next meeting, huh?
Yes, that'd be first reading. Okay, also, just, I think, depending with the numbers and so on, I can make a change, I have it all on the computer.
I was just going to ask, David, this is bad, this is information we found out, because, uh, you know, we voted to give everybody the four hundred dollars, here's money, but you could put in there. What you found out about people sixty-five and older.
Oh, the, uh, and talking to Danny and, uh, the person that works with him, that anybody that is sixty-five or older that selects the HSA for their health insurance, they are not eligible by law to have the deposit of active employees that we have, not, not counting the council. We have two employees that would fall into that, they would not benefit from the HSA deposit. They can still take the insurance, but they cannot take the deposit, um, per law, for the IRS. And, and so both are, and I'm not sure what Rick Wayland's final, final decision was, I believe he was opting out of the insurance, uh, but the other person said that they were going to stick with the silver plan that they have, and pay the difference between the two, because it was more beneficial for their health plan, um, than going to the HSA and chancing it, so.
Okay. Any questions on that? Alright.
Don't know, we need to vote on this, unless somebody has an objection to it, and, uh, just wait for the numbers, get them to me good tomorrow, so I can get this done.
First thing in the morning.
Thank you very much. Uh, the other add-on item I have, just, just as mentioned, that I did send to, um, Mark and Kim, the, um, information about food trucks, um, hopefully they can get that to you, so consider that for the fifth, and, uh, you see, I'll be talking in later detail. I just wanted to let you know that, um, first of all, looking into it, found out that, uh, July, the legislature, its infinite wisdom, uh, determined that they're going to keep us from regulating the food trucks in a couple of ways. First of all, you can't prohibit them, you know, totally. Um, and, um, and there's a few, a few items they regulate, we can bring them, that's, hang on, there's still quite a bit. I did take, I did take that into account, when I sent you, so, uh, but, so that, like, like I said, it's hard to tell whether that was fit under the circumstances they have, it's in my mind, too, that explains it, so, um, if you have any questions, let me know, and so I'm going to try to attend that meeting, so I can answer questions about it, but, um.
I did send that out, did everybody get it?
I did get it, but I haven't read, but you said that, uh, someone had, the regulations state that we cannot regulate the food trucks.
No, no, you can regulate.
Oh, we can.
It's been minimized quite a bit. Before this, you had, uh, pretty, almost unlimited according to the regulator. But now, uh, in some cities prohibited them, others allowed them, as I said, in my opinion, you should allow them, but it doesn't matter now, because you can't regulate them, but you can, you can, you can, you can designate zones, you can do tons, you know, time, place, banner, uh, so long as it doesn't interfere with the regulations that the state does. And I, I think that exception goes out, so, uh, the memo goes into detail of that. And give you some alternatives regarding regulations, I'm not suggesting you accept all those regulations, that was giving you basically a lottery of regulation to consider. Uh, and I, I did exclude some, I thought, this kind of, you need to be able to have time or personally all the regulations, uh, as simple as possible. I'm sure Rick will be laying along as well. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Alright, we have the city manager report.
The first one I brought up, the sheriff's contract, it's been November ninth. Also, just for your information, and mowing, the sheriff's north district, the city's always mowed that, but I got a call from Kenny Pandar, who's the captain, the sheriff's office about a couple of weeks ago, and he said, hey, we'll take this on, like, inmate workers, they get the, the days are mowing other places, we're looking to fill in, and we'll do it for you. He said, wow, that's great, thanks very much, I had a couple days to do it, so they're always been out there, trouncing trees, mowing, so. So, the brick building, just a short one, council member Sullivan, it sent me a text message with a picture of the little studio next door. And spent some time with the people, real nice people, because they're getting water in there, so we got Robert over there, and then Robert was trying to get a a stucco contractor out, he got one out, and he called me, and he just walked out, had to be in my office, and he said, come here, this guy. The second contractor, we have got a quote on either one of them, we're assuming it's coming in through the stucco cracks and running down the wall in the brick building, I don't, you may already know, but I didn't know that little studio, like, it has to have its own wall, the front and back. Their interior wall on the west side of the brick building, and their interior wall on the other side, they, east, sorry. I almost said it wrong. So anyways, they had water, and it was all stopped up by the time I got there. But last night, I don't know about your house, oh my gosh, it hadn't come down, it hurt my throat, oh boy, so after lunch, I stopped by and I went in, like I said, I got two friends, and they seemed like good people in there, but they only had a tiny bit of water in there. But their roofer had gone up and put something on a crack or whatever, so thinks that we're still going to get somebody out there. The one guy, Rob called me over on, and he said, you'd have to pull this all off, it was done wrong, you know, falling off in places, rod of wood. And then I went inside, wow. About the other day, I said, the second floor is very dangerous, place you shouldn't walk up there, but just letting you know, they were getting water in there, but it has a big downfall, yes, they just have a tiny bit, and hopefully we'll get the one contractor to give us a price, the one says he can patch it up. I don't think about, pull the whole side of the building off and.
By the way, Mr. Vinney, the world-class artist, his art is all over the world, and in famous restaurants all over the place, it's a great asset for him.
He, he is, and I really appreciate it, because I talked to her, you know, I said, coffee shop, he said, I love a coffee shop down here, man. And actually, there was a, I did a call from someone Friday, he's actually an immigration attorney, thirty years down in Miami area, and he was, someone told him the brick building, because he liked to come and invest, and I told by the back, that's not what I'm looking for, I said, was it one across the street, is that the reddish one you had? And he was supposed to come up, because he's looking to do some stuff up in Sari, and he's been touched back facing, so his idea sounds pretty good, he wants to do, and and do some help up here, and maybe bring some stuff in, so.
Very good. Any questions on the report? Seeing none, oh, you got Mark. Dan, do you have the number for us?
I just want to say, it's amazing how much you forget when you're under pressure, because I was looking all over, you know, where where certain accounts were lying and stretching. I do have one question before I can go, give you the final number, on page forty-one, we had that fifty thousand dollars in per-street construction, we moved twenty up to signs. Were we eliminating the other thirty, or were we?
We were keeping thirty.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, I'm going to go just quickly, this one was here.
All right, so then I've got your number for you. And Kim brought this up, in the resolution itself, the second line, it says, adopting tentative budget. I don't know if that's supposed to say final budget or, or proposal, okay, final budget.
That would be considered struck out, if somebody takes a motion to.
So be the final budget of the city, and the number is one eight three six five seven one six.
One eight, three six five, seven one six.
Correct.
I already read the short title, didn't I?
Yeah.
One eight, three six five, seven one six.
We've already read the short title and had a public hearing, we'll just have to say, so move. So move. Very good, Billy. All right, do we have a motion in a second? We need a further public hearing. Any further questions?
Oh, wait, you know what? Oh, just in case.
Out of an abundance of caution, we'll have another public hearing. Public hearing for resolution number twenty twenty dash seventeen is now open, and a motion to speak is now due, so. Of course, there is no one, so public hearing is now closed. We have a motion in a second, there's no further questions, we will call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
I'm sorry, for the final budget?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Do we have the final numbers for the capital bridge plant? I didn't know.
I think we're just adding, probably adding fifty-two thousand, because we put a hundred twenty-two in for the mower, and we took seventy out for one of the trucks.
Would it be inappropriate just to do their next thing?
Well, I don't know why I asked, because I have a budget.
Yeah, I don't think that has to be done by.
So we'll just, we have to actually prove it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll approve it at our next meeting, give you ample time to make the final. Okay, so that concludes our regularly scheduled agendas, or anything else that we do in the city? Hearing nothing, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Seeing no opposition, we adjourn.
Mayor and Jerry, please don't leave us.